So very good. Our public board of education meeting has started and we do have a quorum, correct?
Yes.
Because Chris is on.
There's six of us.
There's Chris. So we have a quorum and we will move into executive session and I will entertain a motion to do that for the correct reason. I assume negotiations is part of that, but.
I I moved that we enter into exec session for purposes of discussing negotiations and litigation and personal personnel issues.
Thanks, Pat. Segue by Sean and go ahead and call the roll.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradno?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yep.
Nicole Lefebvre?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Wazin?
Yes.
Good, thank you, and we'll we'll be back and hopefully right on time. So Sean, we have a we have a full house, Sean. We have not seen a full house in this room for two years. It's great to see everybody here. We are we are back from exec session and we're now in our report meeting. And but we are going to do something a little different before we get into the rest of our agenda. Different in that so we have a presentation from the fifth graders at Beverly J Martin. So we're going to go ahead and let you all go. And we look forward to that and then we'll do our humdrum budgets and agenda. But we look forward to hearing from you, so please go ahead. Dr. Brown, others. Dr. Ash, however you want to get started here.
I believe I have my two fifth grade teachers have it nailed down.
Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. It really warms my heart to be in a room together like this. Thank you for giving us your time. We really want to honor our fifth graders and let them do most of talking. So Stephen and I will just give a really brief introduction to the project.
Yep. Hi, guys. It's good to see you and be with all of you this evening. In fifth grade, one of the science standards that we look at has to do with measuring salt water in the world versus fresh water. And we didn't find anything that was entirely relevant about that question. So we wondered if we could turn that around to something that would engage our our young people. And something that's been on our mind for a while now is that we've been importing plastic to to give our students fresh drinking water, clean drinking water, because we discovered lead in our drinking water six years ago. And for for those six years, our water fountains have been off. And so we started with a very simple question was, which was, is our drinking water at BGM safe? And from there, we contacted some community experts and decided to test the water and find out whether there was lead in it or whether it was safe to drink.
And then in the ELA component, we studied the question of how can my voice inspire change? And so the students analyzed different types of persuasive writing and then really honed their skills as persuasive writers, the results of which you'll see in a moment. We're really proud of them and we're so grateful for you letting them come and share it. So thank you.
Help us remove the water coolers and plastic cups from our school. A presentation to the school board by Desmond Lefebvre and Henry Marte.
As you know, there was lead found in our water in 2015. Thank you for caring about our safety and buying us water coolers. This year, the Life Science Laboratory tested our water and they said there was less than one part per billion in our water. Isn't that outstanding? Because there is no lead in our water. We should get rid of the water coolers and sell more water pumps.
One reason why we should stop using plastic cups and plastic water coolers is that plastic harms the environment. Our school uses 4,800 cups per month. 4,800 cups when stretched down our hallways six times. Those cups end up in the ocean and animals get tangled up in eating. Soon the garbage is going to outweigh the fish. We don't want to add to that problem by wasting single-use plastic cups and drinking from plastic jugs.
Another reason is plastic cups and water coolers are a waste of money. We spend $90 per month on plastic cups at BGM. We also spend money each month to get new jugs for water. We go through 20 jugs each week, so it must be pretty expensive to refill our water coolers. That money could be spent on things like school supplies that we didn't have to keep buying in order to throw those plastic cups and water coolers. Kids, we would feel ecstatic if we had more money to spend on school supplies or rebuild our supply and equipment for the gym.
Lastly, our water is king. Scientists at Life Science Laboratories tested our water for lead. They find less than one part per billion of lead in our water. That means our lot water has no measurable lead. Isn't that amazing? So we can safely drink from our fountains and faucets. Even though we can safely drink from our fountains, kids still go to the water coolers because we have more coolers than fountains. So the coolers are closer to kids' classes and more convenient. If we remove the water coolers, kids will use the fountains.
As you can see, we can remove the water jugs and get more water fountains. Water jugs and single-use cups are a waste of money and dangerous to our oceans. Also, our water is safe to drink. Please help us get rid of plastic in our students so we can save our future.
There is no lead in BGM. Presentation to the school board, Chris.
Dear school board, as you know, in 2015, there was lead found in our water fountains. Thank you for the water coolers. It showed us that you really care about our health. But I have outstanding news. Our water is lead-free, so I think we should remove the water jug and get more public water fountains. First, the plastic from our water jug and single-use cups is polluting the ocean. Old junk that come out of plastic is dumped in the ocean every minute. That's horrendously harmful to the ocean. At BGM, we use 4,800 cups each month. Those must be put somewhere, right? And unfortunately, 91% often ends up in the ocean. At BGM, we want to stop contributing to the problem of plastic pollution.
Next, our water is clean and safe to drink. We tested our water with Life Science Laboratories and it's clean. They found less than one part per billion lead in our water. Do you want to know something more outstanding? Less than one part per billion means that the lead is not measurable with any machine that searches for lead. The amount of lead in our pipes is so low that we can drink from our water fountains and faucets. Since our water is so clean, we should remove the water coolers, which create a lot of waste. So students will will drink from the fountains instead.
Now, you might think, this is no. Okay. Now, you might think, this is not my problem. I do not care about this. Well, actually, it is because you see, uh. How do I put this? All of these cups and jugs cost money. Mr. Wong, our custodian, spends money about buying 800 jugs each year. He also spends money about buying about 4,800 cups each month. Instead, we can buy school supplies, there are a lot of problems, even genitals, and maybe anything for illusion. We shouldn't use plastic cups and jug. Our water is clean. Single-use plastic is an unnecessary expense and it pollutes our ocean, our oceans. Our ocean, oceans should be plastic-free. So help us become a plastic-free school by getting rid of plastic cups and jugs. Thank you for listening to our presentation.
Remove the water jugs by AJ and the question, can we please get our water fountains back? We want to stop wa- wasting plastic cups and jugs.
In 2015, there were lead, there was lead found in our water. This year, we tested our water with Life Science Laboratories and we found less than one part per billion lead in our water. That's really extraordinary. Can we please get our water fountains back? We wanted to stop wasting plastic cups and jugs.
We are wasting money in on our jugs and cups.
One reason why we should stop using plastic cups is because it is a waste of money. At BGM, we spend $90 per month on these single-use cups. Isn't that shameful? We could use that money for better food in the cafeteria and school supplies. There is no point in buying something that you buy and you use once in a twice, then it isn't a trash going to the ocean about to kill the sea animals.
Plastic is dangerous for the ocean. Which bring me to another reason why we need to stop using plastic cups and jugs. Plastic is dangerous for the oceans. For instance, plastic end up in the ocean. Animals eat it and die. There are 26 billion pounds of trash in the oceans. We are adding more trash because we use 4,800 cups a month at a school. You could fit that many cups and 29 trash cans. Isn't that crazy? Wouldn't you like to not use a lot of plastic because if we were animals, we'd be dead.
Our water is clean and safe to drink. Most importantly, our water is clean and safe to drink. In fact, we tested our water. Scientists at Life Science Labs and they found less than one part per billion of lead in our water. That means the amount of lead in our water is so small that it is unmeasurable. You should trust them to test your water because they test water for the whole city. So now we know it is safe to drink from our regular fountains again.
As you can see, using water jug is a waste of our money because our fountain water is clean and safe and plastic kills animals and hurts the ocean. So help us get our water fountains back.
I want to thank everyone for listening, but I really want to thank our kids for stepping up and our staff for teaching them how. And what this leaves you with is a question of how can you support the facilities committee to support Ken and the gang to, we already got rid of half of our coolers and now the kids are like, where's the replacement? We have water filling stations and we need six more. So that's what we do.
Well, Dr. Ash, you have two of the facility committee members, Sean and myself, sitting right here.
No, we're not on the spot. We'll put it on the agenda for next week's facilities committee. We'll have a conversation. I will tell the students that sometimes these things take a couple of months, if not a year or so, to make happen. But we'll get right on it and see how we can make this happen. You you've convinced me as one committee member, so.
That was the goal of the persuasion thing.
No, they're just trying to be respectful person. That's fine. Well, everybody, we're back kind of to our normal board of education attendance, but it's nice when we have great guests like we just had. So back to. We need the, I need the door open. Thanks, Mary. Slamming the door. So. So we'll get back down to it and there's no modifications to any gender, correct? I remember good, right? It's funny to talk about. And so we'll just roll into public comment period.
Thank you.
Need that from my knees right there. We're here. We're receiving public, public comment, right, public comment. We have some folks who are listed here. First up, and I'm going to apologize for mispronouncing his name. Please tell me how to pronounce it correctly, but is it Mira Cohen?
Yeah.
Steven, you like to pull a chair up as well, whatever you like to do.
Right, there should be, there should be a chair up.
I had a question just and a few comments about the new proposed plan for if I have school next year, specifically about the universal lunch. I think it does propose an equity issue purely because some kids are able to pack lunch and some kids are not. And the kids who are not, you have around 1,300 students all trying to go into one time, meaning they will have less time to eat lunch. I think it also has the potential to be really negative for a lot of kids who have social anxiety or don't like crowds, especially coming out of a year of pandemic. I know a lot of kids are very apprehensive of being around that many students. So that might prevent them from getting lunch because that's a very hectic environment to begin with and then adding that many kids. So I was just wanting to wonder if you guys had any like information we could get and also just.
Thank you. Speaking individually or together?
Together.
I rise, together.
Yeah.
So is it Ava Sahara sitting in it? I can't read this correctly.
Oh, Sana wasn't able to make it tonight, but Fatu is here.
There you go. Fatu and Ava, please join us.
So hi, my name is Fatu. I am the president of I-Rise here at Ithaca High School, an organization that is a collective group of students of color who value community, representation, self-determination, equity, and perseverance. We consistently empower and uplift students of color and elevate their voices through persistent change for advocacy, or persistent advocacy for change, excuse me. We honor our ancestors by plant, by paving a way for future generations like we just saw to pursue social justice and social reform. Today, we want to talk to you about lowering the voting age for board decisions.
Hi, I'm Ava. Most of you know me as Trisha's daughter, but I am a 12th grader at IHS and I am the treasurer of I-Rise.
So why we want to do this in the first place is because we only really start to learn about government and the way that we can participate when it comes to our participation in government class in 12th grade. That should start to happen a lot sooner. So by lowering this age, we could start to encourage young people to get involved with government, local government, and they could truly start to learn the value and the importance of being a part of something like that. And a lot of times we hear students complain. They will complain about things that are happening for days and days, but they never know what to do. And so by allowing them to vote in these elections and in these issues would then allow them to put their advocacy somewhere, would allow them to then use their voices to actually make real change so that they can say that they did something.
Um, because we represent students of color and our mission state, our mission statement emphasizes persistent advocacy for change. We think that it's imperative that we recognize the racial disparity when it comes to voting in our nation. The the voting rights for people of color have already been threatened and as high schoolers, we need to know how to vote, how to register to vote. And as Fatu said, it happens too late. It happens in 12th grade. By doing this, you're setting up students to perpetuate this racial disparity in voting. Um, it's it's very important that we make sure that we know how to vote and we're able to put our opinions out there. And additionally, there is a lot of anonymity anonymity around who the administration is and who our members of the board are. Um, and this is something that people always talk about, well, they decided this for us. They, they. People don't know who they're talking about when they're saying they. We want to be able to bridge that gap between administrators, board members, and students that are a part of IHS. By doing this, we build our community. Especially after the pandemic, it's very important that we're able to build those bridges between our administration and between the students that go to IHS. We think that it's really important that you consider trying to make the voting age lower and and doing it relatively quickly because it's important to make sure that students know their rights and are able to exercise them. Thank you so much for listening to us.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Steve Manley, who will be joining us virtually. And there will be board responses to public comments and then we'll move on, so.
First, Steve. Good evening, everyone. I want to say it's a privilege to follow the speakers who I am following tonight. I want to start my thank yous tonight with the teachers and the students who are teaching and learning and practicing advocacy. It's really impressive and from our fifth graders to our 12th graders, we're seeing it in action. So thank you to everyone making that possible. My name is Steve Manley. I am the executive director of the Ithaca Public Education Initiative. I am also a parent of a third grader and a kindergartner at Beverly J Martin Elementary School. My third grader had already told me all of the things the fifth graders shared with you. So their knowledge is being shared through the school. She told me all about what the fifth graders were trying to get done at school, so it's great to see them. Tonight, I want to give a few thank yous publicly. IPEI raises money throughout the year to make it available to schools across the district, teachers, staff, and students. I want to thank Steve and Christine for being innovative. We saw it today, tonight, here in this room. Being innovative in their lesson planning, going beyond their curriculum to connect with student experiences and what they need. IPEI was glad to be a small part of this and the thanks to Stephen for pushing us in our application process to be as smooth and as clean as possible, as easy and accessible to teachers and staff as possible. I want to thank the fifth grade at BGM for their research and their bravery tonight in talking science to power. If we haven't heard that for the last two years, we got to see it in action tonight from some of our young people and it's awesome. Thanks as well to the I-Rise students who did the same on a different issue. I want to thank the community of our donors who support grants like the one you saw, a small grant made possible tonight. These grants fund innovative ideas like these in all the schools in our district. And I want to thank, lastly, members of our board and the community who joined us this weekend at our return to in-person event, Adult Spelling Bee, held at Liquid State Brewing Company. This raised money for future grants and other IPEI programs. And I want to encourage you and invite you to take a look at ipei.org and register for our scavenger hunt, a family-friendly downtown event, April 23rd and 24th, or our Adult Spelling Bee Round Two. You do not have to participate in round one, though Eldred, I see you. We'll see you for round two, I hope, at South Hill Cider up on the hill on May 15th, Sunday afternoon from 2:00 to 4:00. As always, thank you all for leading our district. Thank you to Dr. Brown and his staff, to all the school administrators and teachers for keeping my kids and all our kids safe. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Any, that's all that's signed up and Trisha, no one else online, right? Board responses at this point?
Yeah, I I would actually like to address the question of lowering the voting age because two weeks ago, our IHS reps brought up the same issue. And I am, as soon as the board meeting was done, I just went online and started Googling because I literally did not know if it was possible. And I discovered pretty quickly that federal voting laws, like like how old you have to be, only apply to federal elections and that state elect, state and local elections can actually be decided at that level. And I also saw that a bill to lower the voting age to 16 has been introduced into the state assembly. That's about as far as I got that night. Haven't really had time to get back to it for various reasons. So I'm a little fuzzy on how this, how that would work at the local level since there are so many local elective bodies to be considered, you know, does it, is it county-wide? Can the school board say, yes, you can vote in our elections without the county saying you can vote in their elections in the towns and the city? I do not know right now. I guess a lot of that is fuzzy. And then I was, and then I was thinking back to the last two times I ran for the board. And one of the things that board members have to do is go out and get 100 signatures. That was suspended during the pandemic, but it's back. You have to go and get 100 signatures of people who are registered voters in the Ithaca City School District and turn that in before you can run for the board. And so, you know, I walk around my neighborhood, I take I take my little clipboard to the office and the thing that I found in the last two times is I've been getting older in the place where I work. Everyone else is getting younger because, you know, my friends retire and the young people come in. And there was not a single person in my office under 30 who was registered to vote. So it's which was a little shocking to me because, boy, I I went out when I was 18 and signed up and wanted to use that disruptive power. So I I have seen of, there's not only the the erasure of voting rights, the attack on voting rights, especially for communities of color, but there is a growing apathy among young people, as you say. And so, uh, you know, I I, as one board member, I hear you. I think it would be great. And I'm thinking legislative action. We so.
Reasonable place to put it, yeah.
Yeah, and and basically as voters, you vote for a slate of of candidate, you know, of all the candidates, you pick up to three. You vote for the budget or against the budget. You vote on the school budget. You vote on other propositions. But in our ongoing business, only the board members vote. You have elected us for other people and other people to make those decisions on a day-to-day basis. So the things that we are deciding every couple of weeks are not things that the general public votes on. You're voting on representation. I do have personally have a comment on the universal lunch right now.
You can go ahead.
Just a couple of, just one question. First of all, thank you. That was really good in your practice for staying up before the Supreme Court by standing. We go. Ava and Fatu?
Fatu.
Fatu, okay. Here's a question. What exactly are you asking us? Given what Pat just said about these multiple jurisdictions in which you may be able to vote or may not be able to vote if we reduce the age, I just want to walk out of here explicitly clear. What are you asking this board?
We're allowed to respond now? Or is this?
Yeah, yeah, this is.
Oh, okay. Just making sure, I didn't want to sneak in.
We're being very liberal and, yeah. Especially with students, yeah. Especially with students, yeah. We wanna hear what you have to say.
So, there is a local organization um called Youth Council Ambassadors and it is youth in the community, um, all of Tompkins County. And they are meant to represent the youth in our community that are in school and outside of school. Every year, we pick a mission um to work on. This year, we are working on a teen center because um there is an increasing problem in, you know, finding a space for young people to go to instead of just taking to the streets or whatever, especially after the pandemic. But last year, our mission was lowering the voting age and it was the issue the year before that. Um, I think that in terms of figuring out the logistics, Youth Council Ambassadors has done a lot of research that can help all of us educate ourselves on how to lower the voting age, how that can be feasible, um, what our timeframe would look like. Uh, and also how we can start an initiative to help young people uh regain that excitement when it comes to voting. I, I pre-registered as soon as I got my permit, um, my driver's license, and I'm really excited to go out and vote for my first time. But uh, we, we do need to do research, I think. Um, and we're also asking to go out and go beyond the people in this room, go out into the school and say, would you like to vote? Hear from the students, um, especially on that last point. We want to connect our board members to the students. We want to see you in our schools. We wanna be able to communicate with you. Um, so I think that is what we're asking. Adding on to what Ava was saying, I know you brought up that like you were doing research and that like it was only on like the federal level that you really found like restrictions for. And I believe that like, I think we're asking, I think, a start for the district level here, for our district, for students that are 16 and older to be able to vote um on certain issues. That'll help students, like Ava said, get connected, know who's on their board, know who makes decisions for them. And like you said, we're electing representation, so, and that's to get to know what that is and get involved in like our local government. And so, um, I've also been a part of YCA and those um extensive like days that they spend doing research about these things is another good outlet for um figuring that out. I think just lowering, like, starting with the district first, um, is what we're looking for.
Thanks. Uh, other board members, others, students you're gonna speak soon, but go ahead, go ahead.
Um, well, I had, I had a question for Mira, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, if, if my math serves me right, um, you said 1,300 students, right?
Yeah.
How, how long would this universal lunch period be?
Well, I'm just going off of the main point.
I, yeah.
Was that, so it'd either be 45 minutes?
I think it would be great, Dr. Brown, Lily, if you're on the call for there to be some presentation. I got an email with a slideshow. I couldn't make that meeting, but I think it would be, it would be best to us all to be able to respond appropriately if we all saw the same information. And that's not, not to answer your question, I just don't have the information to respond.
No, they're just two proposed schedules, not something.
Sure. Adam, is this gonna be part of your speech during the time of the student reps or you're saying something different?
Um, this is the response to you.
Oh, sure.
Um, so first off, thank you for coming uh towards your concerns. Um, the four of us actually met with uh Mr. Crumble and the um, our building administration um, on this topic yesterday during lunch. Um, with, and this whole scheduling thing is really more of um, uh, an issue specific to IHS rather than district matter, but um, I would like to enter for your questions. And I also wanna let you know that we actually brought up many of the same concerns that you just did um yesterday. Um, the current plan is for um, the data stay very similar to what it is now. Um, but with every class period, to be extended by two minutes to 47 minutes, and I believe the lunch would be 35 minutes long. Um, which, I agree with you, it's, it's concerning. That's not much time in when we have about 1,400 kids in the school. Um, and I think we kind of estimated that like 60% of them at least probably rely on the cafeteria for their food every day. Um, that's, that's concerning. That, that could leave some people with a five-minute lunch, if at all. Um, so, we have been working um, A, to uh get as much feedback as we can um on the system um, from students like you and everyone else. So, it's, it's really great that this one will be some experience. Um, as well as to try to figure out potential solutions if this does go through. Um, it seems like uh the administration is pretty intent on it happening. Um, and there are some ideas about expanding the locations where food can be offered um as well as opening up practically the entire school um as an eating space. Um, so that not everyone is condensed into the cafeteria, which is kind of impossible. Um, so, yeah, um. Yeah, there could, there could be uh multiple lunch lines um using the concession stands and all of that. Um, so, yeah, um, if you, which, if it's like, we could also um get in touch and we can invite you to another meeting with the building administration. Um, and also if you'd like to bring friends or whatever to voice more of your concerns, um, that is definitely an option. And we are continuing to work with the building administration to create more forums and more places where people can come in and talk about the schedule and really be more transparent about the process of, you know, how do we make these decisions and how do we decide what the future vibe just will look like.
Thank you.
Looks like we have another LACS student wants to contribute to this conversation.
What? I, I love your point. I fully back you in what you're doing. I mean, we go to ICS, we love democracy, that's like our whole shtick, but we really agree with you. Um, I'm curious, to go to the lunch thing, we don't know, I mean, Andrew, I mean, this is how I say this, why is decision happening?
Um, essentially, so currently we have three lunch periods. Um, most, I think about 85% of the school has a lunch period. I think 15 and 20% have opted out of lunch. Or, um, the master schedule this year was pretty funky and a lot of people opted for lunch, but the schedule worked out in a way where they had to have a study hall instead of a lunch. Um, and also, there have been issues with needing um the state requirements for instructional time. Um, and I said, well, we have a, we actually have a relatively short day schedule. Um, and the state has been telling us you need to increase the amount of time you spend in classes or else you're cut funding. Um, so, um, that, that's one issue and also, um, administration wants to ensure that everyone has a chance to take a break and eat and socialize during the day. Um, however, there are also, you know, people who currently choose on their own to forego that option. So, you know, there are, there are pros and cons to all of this. Um, so, yeah, that's kind of the behind the, to which it changes the system.
Uh, yeah.
Um, and Grace, do you wanna send that? How about, Grace just pulled up the, the slideshow.
Like, you might said that you got the presentation, right?
No, we, if you have children at the high school, you probably have.
We would. We would, uh. Bring them to Chumble at a future meeting.
Right.
They're gathering feedback and looking at options now. We are not near a decision, just an information gathering stage like that.
We appreciate that. And um, right, we have, we haven't dug into this yet and we look forward to that presentation and be able to uh give more background. Board, board responses. First, uh, the BJM fifth graders, uh, absolutely phenomenal. Uh, thank you, uh, Nicole DeFaye for um asking us to create space in our agenda for that sort of presentation, the very definition of uh learning being brought to the board and um, I'm just very thankful that that's the kind of thing that uh makes being on the board worthwhile. So, that was great to see. Especially, I think you may have known one of the presenters as well. Um, but that, that was, that was fantastic. Yeah, maybe you see him on the board. That was fantastic. Um, uh, regarding the universal lunch, I'm gonna be interested in this conversation. I know what comes to me on a regular basis around issues of equity uh that folks uh have been forced to opt out of having a lunch and trying to find ways to make sure that everyone has access to a lunch just to take a break. So, I'm gonna be intrigued to see how this works out with all the um considerations that need to be had whenever we're talking about running an organization of 1,400 people plus a number of staff, students, faculty, et cetera. So, I'm looking forward to that. Um, to Ava and Batu, uh, I've been involved with uh the Youth Council. Uh, in October, we were having a conversation about whether this is possible and taking a look at some of the legislation um in regards to whether or not this could be a school district decision. I don't think that we have um a legal decision on that yet. Uh, but one of the things I know that we can do as a school district and as a school board is put our full weight behind the committee that's trying to make this law uh to lower the voting age to 16. Um, if I, I just pulled the bill up here, if I'm not mistaken, it's uh Bill uh 36X, Senate Bill 366. And so, we'll keep taking a look at that and um, I would hope that maybe we would put it on a Legislative Advocacy Committee. And with that being said, I'm aware that part of the ways in which systems maintain themselves is by sending something to a committee. Right? Because then it goes to a committee, then we talk about it, then we write a report, and then we have another committee to take a look at that report and get back. And so, I'm very much aware of how that game is played and I've watched it throughout my career and been a part of it and trying to advocate against it as well. With that being said.
That's not our committee operation. We get stuff done.
Well, that's, that's precisely the point that I was gonna make, is that we have examples of uh the Ithaca City School District Legislative Advocacy Committee actually passing laws that affect the entire state. So, we have a, we have a playbook by which to go to and so, um, I'll expect.
Our chair is, is uh, is, is, should probably chime in here virtually. What do you think, Aaron? Should we take this on?
Yeah, I'm, so I'm, I'm a little confused. We're taking on universal lunch and the voting age?
Universal lunch is, no, that's not a legislative thing.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I just, I got mixed in what we were discussing. The voting age then is what we're.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and yeah, absolutely. No, I had already put that in my notes to add to our next agenda.
Excellent. Um, all right. So, we'll be sure to communicate when that's on the agenda as well and we'll do additional research in the meantime to see what is possible.
And, and all committee meetings are open to the public. It's, it's an open meeting. Um, there, you can, it's much more informal than this. You can take part in conversations, ask questions. Um, very few people ever attend our meetings. But they do when something's really, really important to them.
I would like to extend an invitation, actually, to those of you who just spoke at this meeting about the age. Please come to our next meeting, which is I'll, I'll get the confirmation of the date from Tricia.
Chris Malcolm, do you, you wish to weigh in?
Um, if I tried to, I'd be redundant. I just wanna shout out the BJM children who did an awesome job, but also um thanking the students coming out and their participation. Um, it's actually inspiring. Um, where some people are choosing to be on the sidelines, they're actively engaged in it. Um, you guys made my night, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So, so let's move on. And so, student reps and LACS wanted to uh go ahead with your prepared remarks.
Yeah, okay. Uh, LACS has been doing really well. We, our school reacted a lot to the decision to end the mask mandate. We had an EASM or Emergency ESM, which is where you had to have 100, 20 students. 50 students and 15 staff vote to host an emergency all-school meeting to talk about the mask mandate because our staff and students have been, have, we're the most pre-mask-heavy school. And so, we all kind of reacted of like, are you guys comfortable with this? Are you not comfortable with this? We actually, it was a really good discussion. Uh, we had it in our third period and it went really well. Our community kind of settled into the idea. And I think it impacted a lot of students in their decision of what they were gonna do the next day. This is the day, the news came out, not the day that went in place. And students, we're still a pretty mask-heavy school. Uh, students are slowly becoming more and more comfortable not, but it's been a good transition. And I think I kind of wanted that to having that community discussion in our gym, which, because we're there, there's something, thinking that. Uh, yeah. That was, it was a real discussion in our school. It was a more comfortable decision.
Um, so, we are in the middle of the third quarter. Um, during the fourth quarter, our school, um, we changed from our typical schedule and we, we begin these, these trips. So, as a student, um, you will, actually, on Friday, I think, is when people sign up. Um, on Friday, tomorrow, people are gonna go around um the school during sixth and seventh period and, and, and check out some of these various trips. And then on Friday, people are gonna sign up for trips. Um, and you, you know, you sign up for a trip and then you meet every Thursday for pretty much the whole day on Thursdays. Um, and, you know, so there's uh, and then each, all the trips will kind of, there's a, there's a week where all the trips get to take the whole week to do, like, they're, I think, it's called trips week. So, some of the trips, like um, like the Akasazni um aid trip and the canoe trip and the rock climbing trip, they'll, will go, you know, they'll leave Monday morning, they'll come back Friday afternoon, and they'll spend the whole week, you know, wherever they decide to go to. So, the canoe trip will spend the whole week, you know, canoeing around. Rock climbing trip will spend the whole week, you know, climbing on rocks. Um, and then the Akasazni, or it's called the Akasazni Cultural Exchange, Cultural Exchange Trip. That's, that's a trip that's connected to a certain, you know, certain service class um, at the school. And so, the students in there have been kind of researching a lot of like service and also like indigenous culture and stuff. So, they're gonna go, this has been a very long running trip. So, we have a, we have a partnership built up um with the, you know, the Akasazni Nation. Um, and they're gonna go there and, you know, last time they were there, they helped, you know, like rebuild a barn, you know, and so they just kinda do new stuff and hang out there and, and, and talk with the kids, you know. Basically, you hang out there for like a pretty cool time.
Yeah, and then there's also, obviously, you guys remember Spanish trip? I thank you for ordering citrus. They are shipping currently, so you'll get them probably next week. And we also have apparently this trip is where a group of students go down to New Orleans. We go back to the same neighborhood every year. We build multiple different houses, we help paint the community and that kind of thing. We also have a couple other trips that are more minor, but these are kind of more like big, or trips.
Yeah, the big, yeah, we call, those ones are called away trips. Um, so that means they spend the whole week away. And like Spanish trips goes to.
I think around Puerto Rico.
Puerto Rico, yeah. Because of your citrus, oh, thank you.
Um, yeah, and then the other thing that we're gonna be doing is next week on Friday, so during the district conference day, we're gonna be bringing in juniors to do their P-Bats. And so, P-Bat stands for um performance-based assessment task, I think they're calling it.
Yeah.
Um, which is basically our alternative to the reading exams. So, this, this, this period, people are gonna be getting their English P-Bats. And so, their English P-Bats are a um uh, you have to, it depends on the class that you do it for. Um, but generally, you, it's basically a media analysis. So, in the, you know, in, in my year when I did my P-Bat, I did a song analysis. So, I chose a song and kind of analyzed it and its kind of cultural connections and, and so on and so forth. And then you make a presentation and you give that presentation to a kind of a panel of, of graders, basically, who will then evaluate, you know, based on your actual analysis. Um, and then the paper that you write to accompany the presentation and then also your presentation. Um, and then yeah, so that's our alternative to P-Bats. And so, that's, that's what the English P-Bat looks like. The social studies P-Bat is, is very similar. It's a research paper and then a presentation. And then we also have P-Bats for science, which is just a general kind of like, you know, design an experiment, conduct it, give a lab report. And then also P-Bat in math, which is find a kind of, a bit more straightforward, just, you know, find a tricky math problem and, and do it and then demonstrate it. Um, and generally, that's, that kind of work is already incorporated. And so, so all the classes that 11th graders will take, um, any class that 11th grader is taking, uh, most of them are kind of P-Bat classes where the, the, the course of making this task is directly integrated into the curriculum. So, you know, all of my classes kind of, you know, I have a lot, you know, all my classes are with 11th graders. So, we kind of flowed into the P-Bat period at about the same time and it kind of was very natural progression. It was very integrated with coursework. So, people wrote their P-Bats and then they're gonna be presenting on Friday and next Friday. And that's, that's all from us.
Yeah.
Thanks, LACS. So, if you have.
Um, yeah, first I would like to mention that it's great to be part of a full house in person for the first time.
Hmm.
Uh, an experience. Uh, the BJM students did an amazing job with their presentations. I was very impressed. Um, also, thank you to Ava and Batu for furthering the conversation around voting. And I look forward to you continue talking about the new etc. I for next year. Um, these past two weeks have gone by pretty smoothly for IHS students. There have been many exciting events like Cabaret Night hosted by the IHS Orchestra last Friday. Many talented students performed impressive and memorable acts for a packed cafeteria. Winter Formal held at the Celebrations Event Center on Saturday night was an awesome experience. It was the first school dance other than prom since COVID. Moving on to the topic of performing arts, the annual choir theme concert is this Friday night at Cal Auditorium. The theme this year is weather reports. Last week, our wind ensemble and concert band performed for the future of the IHS band, the eighth grade band of Stewart and Boynton Middle School. It was great to hold the combined band concert again and share music in person after two years. There are also multiple murals happening at IHS, helping helping to shape IHS into a more safer and representative space. With the BML, BL, BLM mural currently being painted by our students in the art hallway and our AAPI mural in the process of being finalized. We have had great success in our indoor track team with five students placing top twenty in multiple event activities. Student athletes are gearing up for spring sports, which is starting next week.
So uh Code Red Robotics is heading to the Finger Lakes Regional Competition on Tuesday. On on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, after two years of cancellation. Uh the team, that's why I'm very young and democratic, um has spent uh last two months building a one hundred and fifteen pod robot and are excited to see it compete. Uh if they win in Rochester, they can go to the World Championships in Houston. And other school-related news, we are working with the league administration um to advance a plan to implement a pass fail or credit no credit uh system to be available for students by the end of the year. Um I must say as well, I was so incredibly impressed by the presentation given by the BJM fifth graders. I didn't need need much convincing, but they had me totally convinced. Um and I must say the same applies for high school. Um there are a lot of coolers and a lot of cups. Um and I I doubt that the situation is much different in terms of quality of the water at IHS than at BJM. And it would be really great to see um the re-institution of the water ponds uh in replacement of all of the plastic jugs.
Um so the other student reps and I, um we're wondering if the board could give us an update on the bus driver, nurse, and custodial shortages throughout the district. Um has the district changed its approach um in the past few months in attracting uh new district workers? Has there been any progress um in just in hiring um new nurses, bus drivers, and custodial workers? Um the country is also still struggling with a nationwide teacher shortage. Um and the student reps are wondering if ICD has begun recruiting um new educators for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Um as it's quickly approaching. Um it is imperative that ICD be aggressive um in recruiting uh teachers for the upcoming year, especially teachers of color um who are in high demand throughout the country.
Um the mask mandate has ended, and many students and teachers are enjoying the new ability to choose. I'm however mindful of the current pan- of the continuing pandemic, the majority of the student body at that high school still wears the mask. Uh the latest Tyler issue has also come out featuring articles of recycling, personal devices, and much, much more. The representative board would also like to thank the IRIS officers for their representation supporting uh sixteen seventeen-year-olds voting in Board of Education elections. The issue of allowing sixteen and seventeen-year-olds to vote has gained a lot of traction in the high school. Students are talking about it. It was actually a discussion um in government class. I've also talked to countless students in the high school that are all in favor of this issue. Allowing them to vote in Board of Education elections would give them a greater stake in the policies that affect them. Sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are all are already often part of the local communities. They have jobs as volunteer and are more than conscious of political issues. Um this specific issue has really invigorated students. A lot of the people I've talked to want to come to board meetings to advocate for it. It's clear that students want this, and they want to have a greater voice in their local community and exercise their civic duty.
Thanks, Seth God. I have board responses. Uh I'll give you one more follow-up to the idea of voting age. If voting didn't matter, we wouldn't make it so difficult to handle.
Um just a couple of questions. Uh Zara? If if you could just summarize for us, so we can, as a board, understand what the major discussion points were for your EASM regarding the ending of the mask.
Students were really surprised. A lot of students kind of felt like it was kind of a big shock, like it happened really quickly. Students, there's a couple of students that are like, well, I'd rather wear my mask because I mean I didn't have special distance. That was kind of a common point. I led the ASM in the gym with my friend's cell phone, and that was kind of a root. Those, there's also a level of like, well, this, for even as I said, that's maybe around three hundred students in a gym. But they weren't masked, because that's still something that we're comfortable holding. Or because that's, I mean, if there's a person that's COVID in there, that's that's a high risk, like, that just doesn't work, like. But we can't put in any sort of mandate into the run itself because it's our, like, our situation, so do we, what's our solution to that? Um no matter being a very kind of repetitive conversation of if you're comfortable with it or not comfortable with it. But there's also, the point of the ASM wasn't to see if, what's the solution? It was kind of for students to air, I am comfortable with this or I'm not comfortable with this. And that's when the community kind of came together of, well, there's some that aren't, but also. How our community needs to, if you are going to not be masked tomorrow, how are you going to purchase the R? And then vice versa, or how to be respectful in having that conversation. And it it's gone great. There hasn't been any, I mean, students are still discussing, but it's become kind of, we all had a conversation about it. So it's a little bit more comfortable, like, we're more comfortable with each other, even if they're not comfortable.
Yeah, uh if I can add on to that.
Yeah, he led in the gym, or in the library.
I did, I led in the library, which which, so the library we opened up as a kind of an overflow space for people who aren't comfortable, you know, being in the whole gym with everybody. There were about, you know, two dozen people in there.
Yeah.
Um so it was, it was a kind of quiet conversation, but it was still good. Um that we went through many of the points that, you know, the gym went through. And I think um one of the biggest takeaways, you know, like Zara said, you know, we weren't trying to find a solution. Um we were trying really to, just kind of everyone to air their concerns. I don't know, um and I don't think there's any way to say, any way to say for certain if the discussion really did change anyone's mind. Um but I do know, you know, I was talking with people, uh age period on Wednesday, um which was, you know, the the end of the day, the day that the masks were removed. And, you know, kind of people were like saying that they went into the day feeling kind of pretty kind of stressed about it, but. It turned out to just be a very normal school day, and I think I do attribute a lot of that to the fact that we came together as a community. Um discussed this kind of very sudden thing that we were all suddenly facing. Um think about how we all felt about it, talked about it to each other, and then ultimately. I mean, ultimately go on with our lives, but we had a bit of a broader perspective about what people were thinking. And so it's, you know, things are pretty normal. Some people are choosing to wear the mask, some people aren't. And that's just, it's not really a big thing, you know, it's not like, oh, you know, this person doesn't have masks, whoa, whoa, and this person is. It's just, you know, it's people's choice.
Other board responses?
I um, I just want to let y'all know, um between the talking about masking and then also the the voting age. The um the next meeting is April twelfth for Legislative Advocacy Committee. And then also, an excuse, I've been, my kids have been coming in and out, and my brain is just done because I I keep getting confused, so sorry for any flubbing. Which there's a lot of, but um you know, y'all are talking about water a lot, and BJM's presentation was amazing. I would love to hear more from you, because um what I find to be a little bit of a a catch twenty-two is that. You know, on the Legislative Advocacy Committee, we're working on school lunches, and one of the issues is the amount of sugar in them. And that's in the drinks, and so, you know, I'm all for no one serving bottled water. We know how terrible that is for the environment. Um but how do we handle getting rid of water, but also making sure students are drinking something that is also sustainable? So, you know, I would love to, and I'll reach out to BJM as well, but I would love to hear from students about how, okay, so we want to get rid of. You know, we want to just have water fountains that we can refill bottles. Well, what about near the lunchrooms where students need to have a beverage with their lunches? I would love to hear from you on how to solve this. Because juice and chocolate milk and soda pop are just not gonna cut it, and I see a hand raised, and I would love to listen now. Go for it.
Okay. LACs, in our main office, we've kind of, our school has been wanting to cut back on the plastic cup soup. We've been giving out water bottles for free. Uh parents have been coming in to hand them out. Uh also, there's been some interest in getting paper cups instead, just so they can sell the option. Uh now, so we have had vending machines since like two thousand and eighteen, so we don't really deal with that aspect, so I can't talk about that. But the sense of water, either paper cups or giving out reusable bottles, has seemed to be a good solution for us.
As for. Other?
Um as as for the high school, I think, I have another thing, I think that a transition to paper cup would be great. Um also, I've seen a few of these like new fancy water fountains around the school recently. It'd be great if you could have many more of them, but they're like, you know, the water bottle filling thing, and also like the normal water fountain.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, kids on their, who need a drink during class can drink from the water fountain instead of the paper cups near the cafeteria or really anywhere. Um kids can fill those up. Um another potential solution to look into, I've been like seeing boxed water around in like cafes and sandwich shops and stuff. I've seen it become more and more popular. Um if that could be looked into as a solution, you know, and something that can be added to the big cooler sugary drinks that's in the lunch, that's by the lunch line. Um that that would be really great, I think.
My understanding with most cartons, though, right, same with like coffee cups, they appear to be paper, but they actually have a plastic lining. So you can't even actually recycle them. It's actually almost worse than an aluminum can. Borderline plastic bottle. So I think we should explore everything, and I love the ideas, and if y'all want to come on the twelfth, come, you can email me anything. But um I I need your minds to help, you know, we need more more ideas. Thank you.
Sir, uh anyone?
Uh just like on the topic of water, um LACs mentioned that they uh hand out free water bottles, right? And I think that uh to combat like the sugary, you know, the drinks. Um we still have to pay for water if we want like a water bottle at the vending machine. Um and it's, when I forget my water bottle or whatever, I usually have to like pay like a dollar fifty for water, which I don't think is the most ideal. So I think it'd be great if you also looked into giving out free water, like bottles at school.
We we did do that for a while. We had a bunch in the middle office. So and and we could probably even look at ways to getting bottles donated from different organizations in town. I don't know if we could figure out an IPI grant to pay for some of that, but we we.
Right, six. Right, six years ago at the elementary schools, and it was basically an initiative at every elementary school. But um but we'll talk more about water. Um anyone else responding?
Hey, Rob, I just wanted to uh respond to the question regarding the hiring um within the school district. Glidira did a great presentation at the last last HR meeting, and Bob could probably speak to it in more detail. Uh but we have always been actively and aggressively recruiting um across the board, and we continue to do so. Um she's got several events coming up where she's reaching out to especially um individuals of color and BIPOC. Um and trying to recruit and get them to come to Ithaca. And uh I will try, I just looked in the HR agenda and the presentation wasn't there. Um and we'll try to get that out to you folks to share that information.
At the awesome, thank you.
But to your point, Chris, it was very, it was a very encouraging uh report from Glidira. Detailed and really going down all the openings in the district, and many have been filled, Bob, but it was uh. You wanted to speak quickly to it, but we glad to provide the real, the real numbers.
I was just trying to pull it up too, but um so uh we had ten bus driver trainees. Two of them have passed their CDL. Uh six of the remaining eight have signed up for their road test. That is, uh it's it's not easy. Neither of those tests are easy to pass. It takes all of months worth, months and months worth of training in some cases. Um and so that's really encouraging in terms of bus transportation. That's that's at LACS then problematic for years. Um nurses, I know uh we were hiring one and had one more that was waiting for the contract to be passed because. Um and I think the board will vote on that next board meeting, um and that's a really good contract for nurses coming up. So that might help us pull in another nurse. Um and custodial, I know uh Dan and I were just texting each other. I think there's coming up.
We're we're down to six.
Six, yeah. And that was from a high of.
Maybe eleven or twelve.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're getting, we're we're getting really close. We have dropped in uh hiring every Thursday. Um we definitely need to do contracts to help as well.
And there were other positions, but Glidira went down the list of all the openings, and you've really uh closed the gap quite a bit. And but we'll share that information with uh with everyone, and we pushed that out there. Um HR HR committee did go through it all, so um. Any anything else right now?
I have one small question for Andrew. The um performance benchmark alternative.
PBETS.
Okay, the PBETS. Are they all individual or are they, so no teams coalesced around a larger project, right?
Yep.
It's individual students right now.
That is correct, because um it's, it's a, I mean, it's 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 a regional alternative, and and the point is to kind of assess. The point is to, the point in moving away from the region's test is that we don't like tests. We don't like standardized tests. We think that they are a a bad metric to measure students', you know, academic success. Um especially because it's a very, I mean. You go into, the the way we do tests, you know, you go into like a testing room, it's like, at our school, we gotta do it in like the cafeteria or the theater or the gym. It's like a center room, there's, you know, there's these tables, you know, and it's very much like a, um. I, it's not like an impressive atmosphere, but it's very much not a very comfortable, like, space. So we think that um the the two big benefits of PBETS are that, you know, um. It is, it assesses you on multiple levels, you know, not just checking out boxes on on a piece of paper. And also that it is more comfortable, because a lot of the graders are actually, you know, teachers that you may have, you know, known. And teachers that, you know, are not completely like just a random person off the street. Um so you, you know, you feel, you know, people who do get socially anxious presenting can feel a bit more comfortable in that, you know, situation. Um so I did go off on a tangent there, and I apologize, but they are uh they are entirely individual, not here.
I I have to imagine that my colleagues learned something about what those tests are. I just wanted to know. Has there been, been any thought about a combined project yet? So thank you.
Very good, thanks. We do need to move on, and consent agenda, and then Dr. Brown, you get to uh, must have something to say tonight. And we're gonna get to that. We have budget to get to and a few other things. So consent agenda is in front of you, and you've got a chance to devour it and motion and et cetera.
I moved the consent agenda.
Second.
As presented, and thank you.
As presented.
Ukrainians won tonight, uh so thank you, Pat, and uh uh who have been seconded, any questions? And if not, um I think it's all pretty straightforward. If we could uh call the roll, please.
Rob Ainsley.
Yes.
Erin Cora.
Yes.
Sean Everly Bradwell.
Yes.
Eldon Harris.
Yes.
Nicole LaFaye.
Yes.
Chris Malcolm.
Yes.
Tricia Wazin. Yes.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, everyone. Dr. Brown?
Thank you for the opportunity this day, and I don't have much to say uh right now. Um just want to note for the board and the community that it's the time of year where we see retirements, show up on the consent agenda. Um Dr. Eschbach was here earlier. We will celebrate her later. Uh Michael Allen is along tonight, who's been a staple in the school community for a long, long time. And Angela Jordan, um we will celebrate her later too, but just to note, this is the time of year to look at the consent agenda and to recognize and appreciate. The brilliant self from both who I spent a lot, a long time in this school district. Uh thank you to all of us. And with that, we will bring up, to help me with budget, uh the person who's trained, been trained by Angela myself, and Amanda Verma. Uh Amanda, we're gonna talk about some budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. It's a ongoing year-long process for us. And we wish to bring. And we wish to bring some most recent updates in anticipation of an upcoming overall budget presentation, hopefully the first meeting in April. So, Amanda.
And Amanda, it's okay to sit, that's great, we're not gonna make you stand through.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit through this then because it's a little more narrative and it is really a review of things that you know, but um, a good reminder, I think, going into the budget process and I do, um, I do wanna say, I I I hope there was a little hesitation there letting Angela go. All of you know, she is just an absolute treasure and so we are gonna be fortunate enough to have her help us and consult with us next year and train whatever the future may look like in the business office, but um, all of the work that you see, everything that we've learned, I mean, that that is just, that is a one-stop shop for um, you know, historical perspective and and really how to do things with just such a beautiful authenticity. I think it really reflects in the work that we bring to you as the board and the community at committee level as well. So um, so tonight, I just, Tricia, I, I actually, I don't mind, if you don't mind going back to that very first thought, I just wanna be really clear here. So, we're, we take to the voters, right, uh, the general fund budget. And uh, for a couple of years now, I know especially Eldred has really asked me specifically and then the team to really make sure that the community remembers that the general fund budget is one part of the budget, that's the one that we wrote on, but there's other budgets that we also use to support all of the work that we do in the school district, right? And so the special aid fund is one that we talked about in the past, it's typically where our grants go, our federal grants, our local grants, our state grants. And so tonight, we are gonna be focusing on that special aid fund specifically because of the um, American Rescue Funds, right? The SIRS and ARP monies that we received um, through the federal government that were related to COVID, but that we as a district, of course, take that and we say, well, what can we do better here? Yes, we address COVID, but we also think that we can use these based on the way that we're supposed to expend them in a way that really supports our education, our teaching, our learning in our community. And so as a reminder, the reason why we're gonna do this, we talked about this the last meeting, is that this, these funds for this current year are part of the general fund, but for next year, they actually have to be pulled out and placed in the special aid fund. And so tonight, Dr. Brown and I wanted to make sure that we went through as a reminder, all of those amazing programs and supports that are going to look like zeros in the general fund, but they are gonna show up over in the special aid fund. And when I give you that line-by-line budget that we give at the finance committee next week, we will be sure that I will like highlight, anytime that you might see what by just the naked eye looks like a budget reduction, it's not. It's a transfer for a year or two, right? Because um, the the SIRS funds, we have one more year next year, and then the ARP funds, we have two more years, next year and the following year. And so our, sort of our plan is we move those over now and then we'll bring them back over the next couple of years as we bring in the revenue back into the general fund of the things that we wanna sustain, okay? So that sort of sets the stage for this presentation. Tricia, the next slide is the numbers itself, right? And so you can see there, the only things that have changed really, we did submit um, our formula uh, to the controller. So we have a real number uh, for the the tax cap formula. We have um, the federal aid is, that's that orange line across the middle, that is the um, ARP and and SIRS of funds that we're gonna talk about tonight. Um, we do still have some estimations on if we wanted to get to a balanced budget, again, these are recommendations to get to a balanced budget. And then that budget number on the bottom is what we will be striving for as we make discussions and as we sort of take a look at um, what that budget component, what the budget components are. And again, you'll know, you'll get more details as we get those line-by-line items that will expand the last meeting. So the next slide, Tricia, is um, just an overview essentially of what is online, right? And so this will have a little bit of modification this year if there were things that um, just need a little more explanation, but we're gonna pretty much go through this. And so, Tricia, the next slide is uh, essentially, this is the slide that's about maximizing in-person instruction. And you can't see it really here because of that little bar, the zoom bar, right? But um, so maximizing in-person instruction, there were a lot of things that we committed to using the ARP and SIRS of funds for. And all of these things really, they have all come to fruition. And so we have used um, monies to support additional um, classrooms as well as literacy supports in grades K through five. We've expanded, um, because we had to lessen the number of of students in classes, teachers took on extra classes. So for example, if I taught English nine, right, I might take on a couple of extra sections and then we would give them an extra point one, six, seven for that. Educational support professionals or TAs and aides, noon hours, that also is for TAs and aides, art and music for integration. And then substitute teachers, we did want a list that wasn't actually on the list online, but we have been using them in a number of ways, right? To give teachers and staff the opportunity to be able to take care of themselves and their families if they were sick, to also do some job embedded PD or or professional development around um, virtual learning and literacy and anti-marginalization. Um, and then also to just really be able to cover when we did have vacancies. So the the substitute teacher we felt was really important and you're gonna see that continue for next year. Next slide, Tricia. So the next one is about um, the supporting mental health and this is no, no surprise to anyone. Um, you know, this is a combination of principals and directors, Mary Grover, Carrie Burke, all working together, trying to really determine um, what the needs are and that is really hard during, you know, pandemic times. And so we really try to have um, the mental health supports, as you can see here, through lots of different avenues, our own staff and then community partners because we recognize the importance and the value of making sure that we address the whole person, both staff and students and also our community members as well. The next slide, Tricia, is the um, essentially, the the students that um, through SIRS and ARP and and of course, even through our daily operations, right? We wanna make sure that we are attending to the needs of students with disabilities, English language learners. And then um, what we've used as the term unfinished teaching and learning, right? Um, and so there were a lot of opportunities for us to be able to use these funds and we will continue to use these funds um, to support things from enhanced summer programming, I know Mary's given overviews in the past, but I mean, we we have just, I think it was like tripled the number of young people that we serve and we continue to do that, you will be seeing that in the budget as well. Um, you will see the enhancement of educational support professionals specifically for students with disabilities um, to be able to be available for not just the CSE and IEPs, but also um, the emotional supports, I'm sorry, the five oh fours and IEPs, but the emotional supports as well. Um, and then a lot of curriculum work, tremendous amounts of curriculum work to support the pillars of learning forward, right? Tricia, the next slide. So the educational technology, that's going to continue, right? We're going to ensure that um, as we sort of all come back together, we've learned that technology can be leveraged and utilized in many ways and we wanna continue to enhance that, we wanna use it as a tool, we wanna be able to have it there at the ready when needed, right? And we don't wanna be caught by surprise and so we have a lot of infrastructure and supports that we have been able to utilize these funds for to um, enhance our work around um, the educational technology pieces. And that's everything from people, right, to infrastructure, right, to devices, um, and and to uh, to learning, really, to professional development. And then the next slide, Tricia, this is our last one really in terms of kind of the, the ways that we're allowed to use these funds. Um, and this is all of the facility's supports, right? And so as you know, we started to look at our buildings, we wanna first make sure that they are safe. Um, and so for safe buildings, we wanna make sure that we have the staff um, that are in and around our buildings to be able to address the needs of our staff and our students. Um, that is through more people and also through enhanced hours, right, of our people. Um, we also wanna make sure that our systems are working. So we actually do have um, contracts with outside agencies that have specialties that are beyond sort of the scope of our own workforce or that are supportive of the the workforce that we have. And um, those help specifically around HVAC needs and many, many other opportunities as needed by the staff um, in the, in the facilities departments. We also know that we're gonna continue doing a lot of work outside, right, all of our outdoor learning. So we wanna make sure that we have opportunities to be able to have um, things like outdoor sink rentals and stuff so that we can address both um, our, our health and wellness while we're outside, but also just uh, expanding those opportunities to be outdoors more and then having classrooms without walls. And then finally, we know that we have those, still those trailers and sheds for storage and we're eager to get rid of those. And as we sort of are able to come back and breathe and be able to maybe find that time again and be grounded to be able to sort and purge and like look at the old things that maybe we are finally ready to get rid of, we can actually set, kind of get into those trailers, get rid of some of the old furniture, scrap metal, bring in some revenue, right? And so those are, those are things that are yet to be done, right? That's like that closet that's, I know it's there and I just keep putting stuff in, but one day I'm gonna get to it. And our one day will be here very soon, I know. Um, and so then, you know, cleaning supplies, MRF thirteen's, all of that, that's, those are the the pieces. So again, I just, I just wanna stress, it was really important for us to go through this because none of these things are going away, even though they may be listed as zeros or less funding than last year. But they are going to be continuing just in a different fund, not the general fund, but actually in the special aid fund. And so I know that these are very important to many people and we felt it was really valuable before we came forward with the general fund budget to ensure that we really laid the groundwork for this special aid fund as well, so that we could understand that these two things more than ever are gonna be working together. So our last slide, Tricia, is just the calendar and we wanna just keep pace, right, of sort of where are we, what are we doing? So um, finance committee is gonna be a full agenda, again, we're gonna have athletics, we're gonna find and performing arts and we're gonna have um, health and well, school health and wellness. We are also going to have what you would see in the budget bulletin or the budget document, right? A draft budget for the Board of Education, we'll get that out probably by the end of this week so that everybody can have time to review that. I'm gonna try to continue to include more and more information and descriptors, right, in that so that people really have an understanding when they look at those ex, that expense uh, projection, right, the budget projection, that you really understand sort of where or why or how um, uh, uh, it's developed and what it includes. Um, and then the following March twenty-second, we'll have the budget presentation and review.
We may shift that to the following, the next April meeting, the perfect.
So Dr. Brown, um, Rob has always reminded me that we can always have additional meetings around budget time, I just, I just wanted to, I wanna put that out there. But these are the ones that are scheduled right now.
I have nothing if not questions.
That's right, and I think we did, we have talked about this in the past, right? April twelfth, per our calendar right now that we have as our meeting schedule, that would be the last meeting that we would have by law to be able to adopt, but we have up until, I think, the twenty-third or twenty-fifth of April to be able to do that, we just don't have another meeting, board meeting scheduled um, in that time. But we wanna make sure we give sufficient opportunities for people to be able um, to dialogue and and have the opportunity to look at things. You always have let's talk, right? As soon as we put that out there, we always get some information back and we also travel. So if there's questions or you wanna host a forum around on the budget uh, information that we share, uh, I am, we are yours. The business office is available to answer any questions, as is the exec team, um, and uh, any budget stakeholders. Because by that time, we will also be meeting with principals and directors directly around everything as well.
Um, just uh, just for my, well, our, my, our benefit, so our first Board of Education meeting in April is?
My?
April twelfth.
Yes, it is April twelfth, that is the.
What's the date today in March?
I know, it is March eighth.
So, but or I I guess I don't have the calendar in front of me, but uh, so anyway, um, so if we don't do the budget presentation on March twenty-second, then our next meeting is April twelfth, that's really the year budget adoption, so we'll go off on the twenty-nine. Is there yet another um, vacation in there somewhere? No, there are five Tuesdays in March this year.
March, Tuesday, then more, March, and then there's Tuesday, April fifth, right?
Which is the first, that's the first.
That's the first and that's policy and human resources.
March always has lots of days, so.
There you go.
So um.
So we do have many more Tuesdays from then till now.
Right, I.
Just not scheduled for budget purposes.
For, for the board, I would think that we would need to uh, have a budget presentation review before uh, we would, we expected to vote on it. Although we do budget all year round and we dig into this all the time, but um, there's not, you know, all board members need to at least have an opportunity to uh, review and uh, dig into it a bit. So just, just saying. Uh, every Tuesday is a day that we can get some work done, so um, so glad to uh, to do what we have to do. The calendar changes what we uh, can schedule from time to time and certainly, it's uh, this budget is uh, they're always important. Uh, and with this again, uh, with the way we are shifting things a bit, uh, and we can talk about that in a second. Um, so let's, so well, um, yeah, so it'll become clear, right? Um, just so I can, it depends on the calendar and I'm always available on Tuesdays, but not everyone is, so I think that's, you know, that's my. That's helpful with all of that.
Yeah, very much so, thank you.
Since I was. Yep, go ahead.
Um, I was just wondering, I'm not, I don't really know much about like budget stuff, I guess, but what is the like specific reason or why we move, we're moving this federal aid from the general fund to the special aid fund? Like what, what's the significance, like?
That's a, really, it's actually, so from from my perspective, it's really was about timing, right? So when we received the federal monies, right, in SIRS and ARP, um, the timing of it came to us when we were in budget development season and we did not have any guidance documents from New York State about how we were expected as a school district to treat that money, right? And so there was sort of, um, so we made a determination because it was, you know, four point four million dollars, right? We made a determination that we wanted to be really transparent and put that into the general fund, right? And show it last year in the, in the budget revenue and then also the expenditures that went with it so that the community could understand how we were gonna spend this money. Because, you know, four point four million, you want some accountability.
Yeah.
When then we were in the budget process, guidance, a guidance document came out and they said, we actually, you need to actually put that not in the general fund but in the special aid fund. We had already, we were already very well into the process and we very publicly made a determination, we're gonna continue with showing it. And then we made multiple announcements, I think, at all the board meetings, like we knew that that money then and those expenses would be transferred over to the special aid fund, right? And so you could see with the money coming in, it's actually a reimbursement, so the money would move, we'd spend it and then we would apply for reimbursement. So this year, we're just doing the cleanup essentially, we're like, okay, it's now in special aid, it has to stay in special aid. But, I mean, I think we really always wanna be transparent for people to understand that we have, we have a lot of um, programs and expenses and things uh, that escalate in the general fund and we also have these phenomenal programs in the special aid fund, which we're gonna have to plan for as that money goes away. So that's, that's the sort of was our answer to your question, but I think that's helpful.
Well, that made a lot of sense.
Yeah, right.
I have a question about our substitutes, Amanda, that's something we haven't heard from tonight, maybe Bob wants to turn it on that too? I didn't think our problem was not, unlike some of the other positions. My takeaway from subs is that it wasn't a money issue, it was finding bodies. So where are we with filling those sub ranks?
Um, Elba, great question, as of January eighteenth, I'm reading from Glidira's document, which I was able to find here. Um, the board has approved and there's onboarding of forty-four subs. So that's a really big difference, yeah, and um, thirty-one were sub-teachers, seven sub-aides, which could always use more, uh, three sub-teaching assistants and then clerical. So.
Right, and uh, just to the earlier point, if I've upgraded to push that out to all the board members and all the superiors, does not, right, not all board members were at the HR.
And although it may not be obvious, I mean, that's a key to our. our professional development and a lot of other things we do. If we can't get subs for those folks who want to train, then what happens? So that's, that's really great news.
And one new model also was that there were building base subs, right? So substitutes that would show up actually at a building every day and they would fill in as needed. And I think that that saved a lot of bandwidth of teachers, the stress, right? Of just like, oh my goodness, like you knew that at least there was a building aid there to be in the back though. And that's why I think we felt it was really important to just add that one piece in addition to what was online. Because there, we really did rely, and we still do on the substitutes, for sure, and finding it through the ARB ceremony.
Amanda, it's in what, where I was going to go, just trying to clarify. I know that 4.3 or 4.4 million, it was a part of our budget. But need to clarify that we're going to discuss the annual meeting and propositions, et cetera. But the local community doesn't vote on that 4.4 million. Really, it can't be part of the tax levy or the tax rate calculation because it is separate. It's federal money, title, title one, special money. So it needs to be somewhere so it doesn't contribute to the tax levy calculation. And so, and which goes to the tax rate, you know, what is the budget we are voting on? And so that's, that's the important piece. And just trying to figure out how we're, how we're doing that. And instead it alluded to it, you know, okay, there's 4.4 million that is supporting the kids and the programming and the budget for '22, '23, and '23, '24. Yeah, but.
Half, it's almost half in '23, '24, right? Because one of the funding streams, it will be its final year next year.
Right, and that's the, that's the issue with funding from other sources than the local taxpayers is that, well, that goes away. And so, okay, we go in 4.4, 5 million of spending on various items that we may or may not need in two years or we may need. So that has to, as you said, start walking back to the regular budget. And so there has to be a plan to, how, how do we manage as we exit?
And that would be, that would be the plan, a plan, it's part of the overall budget process. There are many school districts who will be saying that those programs will be eliminated or will go away over the next few years. We're saying, we are saying the exact opposite. We want to sustain those programs and we're going to put in front of your plan to do so.
That's why we do multi-year budgeting.
Yes.
Very easy to do when you're only budgeting.
Right.
But you don't ever want, you always want to be looking ahead to three years.
On the hallway in 2012. When we had the last funding clip from federal funds. We would have tried to avoid that.
Questions in call? Chris is, Chris, you're chair of the finance.
Chris probably could have done that for me, I didn't.
I'm sure. Went away in and
I don't, I don't need to weigh in. I think Amanda did a great job and we'll be talking ongoing to voting.
Thanks, Chris. Pat, questions? Obviously, this is not a full budget presentation, but we'll get that.
I'm not actually beginning the budget.
Well, it was a shout, it was a shout out to shout out to the great, great talk that your husband did last week at the college event. That was, that was outstanding, so.
No questions?
Probably.
Clear, concise?
Yeah, props to
Thank you.
So, anything else? I mean, we do have just a few resolution.
I'm going to just stay here in case there are questions about the legal notice, if that's acceptable to everyone?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
And
I have a resolution 10.2 calling for the annual meeting and approval of the annual legal notice.
Goodbye, Pat. Sneezes don't count, but Pat, you got it. So Amanda, you just want to speak to this. And some may be surprised that that annual budget vote, it's not an annual budget vote, it's the annual meeting of the six cities school districts, so go ahead.
And, you know, of course, even though there were many eyes editing this, I did notice one item that I'm going to ask actually if there is an edit to one of the things, but I will walk through it first and then I will let you know. So every year, by law, we must create a notice to the public of letting them know that we will be hosting an annual meeting. And an annual meeting is actually this odd name because it is really the day that people go and vote, right? And so that happens each year. It's prescribed, the day is prescribed by law, right? And you go to vote on not just the budget, but you vote on propositions, right? And you also vote on who you would like to elect in your school board, okay? And so this is essentially, this will go out into the newspapers. Tricia is the brains behind the operation to do all this, right? And sends it out to, to our entities, our legal entity, or which is, I think it's the Ethica Journal, right? And this will run for a certain number of days or weeks. And then this is the announcement to the public, okay? It's pretty much the same everywhere you go. Proposition one is always, will the, you know, the proposition is we would determine a budget number, right, not to be exceeded. And then you ask the public, would you allow us to levy the taxes there too? Essentially, you're asking us to not exceed this number and then we can bring in revenue from taxpayers to be able to sustain a portion of what we were expected to spend. So that's proposition number one. For us in Ethica, proposition number two is related to our reserve fund, our capital reserve fund, that by law you have to establish and then by law you have to ask permission to spend from it. So we are asking to spend most of the remaining amount of money in the capital reserve fund that's existing right now to purchase school buses and to do a little bit of capital project work. That is where the edit is. We are asking to do capital project work at Northeast for interior renovations as listed and related, and site work. So I just need to add the words and site work because we are going to be taking demolishing a wall, a failing wall outside the kindergarten classrooms in Northeast. And we're going to actually create some sort of tiered seating, maybe a poured playground there so that the kindergartners have a safe space and then do some interior work as well, probably like floors or ceilings, so that we can get a state aid back on our work. So we'd actually get money back, okay? So that's proposition two. Since we are spending most of proposition two on buses and small capital projects, little related item there, proposition three will establish a new capital reserve, right? Because every, it runs out, the money runs out. And we're asking actually to fund it at $10 million. Costs have gone up, I don't know if you noticed, on everything. And so we really need to be able to have a capital reserve to purchase our buses. And also if we want to start to walk down paths like e-buses, things like that, we're going to need to be able to have a capital reserve to sustain the costs of that. And that is how we purchase buses from our capital reserve every year. So we get voter approval for that. Proposition, the last proposition, proposition four, is actually about a property transfer, okay? So GAC has been coming to our facilities committee meetings and discussing with us their desire to enhance the gymnasium that was used to be used for a Mac and Conception school. And they want to make a full-size gymnasium. And to do so, they actually need some property on the Beverly J Martin campus, which is sort of like, there's like a little garden space, it's just beyond the fencing. And so there's very, there are a couple of ways that we can actually get GAC our land, right? One of the easiest pathways is through voter approval. Because we're a government entity, they're a government entity, you can't just like sort of transfer land pretty like, like a normal homeowner, right? And so this is actually asking permission from the community, and they would vote on this as well, to allow for us to be able to transfer that land, a real property transfer over to GAC. Yeah?
Can you tell me the correction again in proposition three?
It is for proposition two. And so it's at the bottom of, I believe, it's at the bottom of that first page. And it says interior renovations and site work at Northeast Elementary School. Thank you, Sean. And I think that's the only place that I noticed it.
And as, and after we vote with that edit, it will be added. And we would expect to see that on the ballot for that annual. And I know this will be a conversation when it comes up, but it'd be important folks to know that the Greater Ethica Activity Center has been working on this gym for multiple years. This is, would greatly enhance their capacity to serve the residents of the city of Ethica. And then folks have, we've talked about it at facilities. Folks can see the plans that are there. It's a pretty exciting venture, particularly giving some of the additional construction that's taking place on that block as well. So I would encourage folks to take a look at previous facility meetings. Very good, appreciate it. Anything else? Any other questions regarding propositions? We're going to touch base on them again. So it was moved and seconded, I believe, and Tricia, if you could call the roll, that'd be great.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicola Faye?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Wadle?
Yes.
So very good. And one more policy. Policy 1400 about public comments, the changes that are here, for the most part, are simply to change the titles and to reflect our current practice. This policy, as many of our policies have been somewhat outdated and did not include updated titles in the direction of how public comments and/or complaints should proceed. That's an oblique policy, 1400, public comments and complaints brought to the Board of Education for a vote. A second reading and adoption is due.
Second?
Goodbye, Pat. This has been reviewed multiple times, I believe, multiple times, on and off. But now we're ready for, ready to vote.
Next question.
Absolutely.
Where do we kind of put this little system slash structure in terms of saving your families coming to the district? Is there a way that this is like an orientation package or are we expecting it just to be online?
It already is on the website. I'm trying, it may not be the easiest to find, but I know I was able to find it on the website. Mary, do you know, I'm sorry to call you out, but I don't know if you know where it's located. I think it may be.
Find it.
Yep. Sean, you can list policies off the top of your head. Well, this one, we had some conversations. So I will find it and make sure. One of the consistent concerns about policy is that it becomes difficult to find. Our policies are searchable, that's one of the good things about being online. The other good thing about, or the flip side, is that it's an expectation that people have access to being online as well. So we used to have a policy book, which was even more inaccessible. So we're going back and forth. I will find that link to where it is exactly. No, thanks, Sean. Yep, go ahead, Mary.
Understand access for resources of all access resources.
It includes this, correct, the rightness.
And I would just like to clarify that this, this policy on public comments and complaints with Board of Education has nothing to do with the public comment period within board meetings. It is really about complaints of specific individuals about a school practitioner or, or an individual employee, something going on, staff member. And, and the public comments section of the board meeting is not the place to bring those. We try to resolve that at the school, let, let the school resolve itself at that level. But if that is not effective, then this is just a kind of chain of command list.
Are there any specific students, so?
Yes.
We good? Anything else? Ooh, seconded, Tricia?
Robbie?
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicola Faye?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Patricia Wadle?
Yes.
Very good, thanks, everyone. We're pretty close. Other items, Dr. Brown? Nothing today. Anything else, anyone? We all good? Thanks again to Beverly J Martin fifth graders and soon to be fifth graders that are younger that were very much involved in that.
Future board reps. Future board reps.
Oh, yeah, so there you go, exactly. Perfect, so without further ado, thanks, everybody. We are done.